Did you decide on your title?
You know what, you could try and set up.
What's that?
Well, I don't know. This goes against a, I mean, food service company. I was thinking of a food service truck.
Like, bath is?
Like they do in Boston.
Oh, yeah. That's interesting. Like a white hut kitchen.
And, and they've got sandwiches already made. So, I want a salami grinder, hand grinder, turkey grinder, to them. And, you know, it's fast.
Right.
But again, that takes, that takes business away from our company.
Right. How does that work? If they don't make a certain level, then?
Correct.
Would they get anything in excess? So, this, so this is our, this is version two. School committee spelled right. We have the Massachusetts flag because we got more than half of our funding from the great commonwealth of Massachusetts. I had to make the background a little blue so you guys could see our boring flag. But, um, we had to, we had to swap them. Put left, the American flag has to go on the left and the safe flag on the right. And then they have to be the same size as well. I made that change because I, I forgot to bring it. Yeah, I, what I tried doing was I, the background is blue, but I'll do that. I'll do a border.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June ninth, two thousand fourteen. School committee meeting will begin tonight with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. It's at this point that I will step down as chairperson of the school committee and for our favorite five minutes of the year, hand the meeting over to Marie Doyle, uh, who will run the meeting.
Hey, this is my favorite time of year because I get to be chair of the school committee. And if I don't decide to pass this off, I could retain the title of chair, but I don't want that. So, I am more than happy to follow protocol, which, um, protocol says that at this point, I would like to take a nomination for the next chair of the school committee. And before I do that, I would just like to thank Michael for his two years of service. I think many people don't understand what it takes to be chair. There are countless phone calls, people that you deal with, lots of meetings and lots of, um, lots of happenings behind the scenes. And I appreciate Michael's willingness to always step forward to talk with town members as well as school committee members and me and Tom and Kelly and Susan. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, at this point, I open it up, the nominations for the next chair of the Long Meadow School Committee. John?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Janet Robinson for chair.
Second up?
Uh, do, all, all of those in favor? All those opposed?
I would just mention that Liz is here. She's just down the hall, but.
Okay. Well, we have it, uh, oh, we have a majority. Are you going to abstain or vote for yourself?
Well, I can, I'll vote for myself.
You probably want to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a six to zero vote and Liz will be joining us. Here's Liz. Liz, we just took a nomination for the next chair. Janet Robinson's been nominated, so we're, um, it was seconded and we're voting.
Okay.
So, how do you vote for Janet as chair?
Uh, aye.
Okay, so we have a unanimous seven, zero. Janet, congratulations. You are now the new chair.
Thank you.
So, if you switch seats?
Should we wait till all the nominations are done?
I had a new neighbor, Michael.
You think so?
Yeah.
Okay. I got my hands on it. Different perspective on this.
I know. This is, this is odd. Um, so now, we will take a motion for position of clerk.
John?
I'd like to nominate Michael Clark for clerk.
I don't think I want that.
You don't want it?
Okay.
I'll nominate Katie Gerard.
All right. Anybody second Katie?
I'll second that.
I'm thrilled.
Do you want it?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's wonderful.
Any other nominations? All right. All those in favor of Katie as clerk? Opposed? All right. Congratulations, Katie.
Thank you.
All right, so now for vice chair. Nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Michael.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any other nomination? Uh, will you accept this one?
Yeah, I'll take this one.
Just, just ask him. Any other nominations? All right, so all those in favor of Michael as vice chair? Any opposed?
One.
So, six, one.
Great.
All right.
See you later.
All right, so then we're playing musical chairs again?
Yes.
Does anybody want to sit here? Do we need music for musical chairs?
I can stay. You want to stay?
I don't think so.
Oh, I assure you want to move.
Can I ask who seconded the?
Liz.
I didn't.
Oh, sorry. Bye, Joseph. Goodbye. It was fun, Michael.
That whole five minutes that you had with Michael sitting next to you.
I know you were excited about it.
So, um, committee assignments now?
Yep.
All right. I did, but I didn't print it out colorblind. All right, so for committee assignments for this next year, starting with finance subcommittee, I would recommend John as, to continue as chair of finance sub.
Be happy to.
Do we need to vote individually or do we just?
It's your appointment.
Okay. Liz, remain on finance sub?
Yes.
And I will sit on finance sub, so that would be the finance subcommittee. Um, school building, Michael?
Yep.
You will continue?
Yep.
And John, will you continue on?
I'll continue then.
Thank you.
High school building committee, yep.
On school building. Um, collective bargaining. Michael, you'll chair that?
Yes, ma'am.
Liz, I'm all confused as to where people are now. Um, does anybody else want to sit on collective bargaining? You will?
I will.
Okay. Policy subcommittee, um, Michael, will you chair that?
Sure.
Liz, you'll continue on policy sub?
Yes.
And Michelle, will you sit on policy sub?
Yes.
Okay. Communications. Kim, will you chair that one this year?
Sure.
Katie?
Yes.
And you'll be on it. And Michelle, will you be on that as well?
Yes.
All right. Legislative, John, will you remain on legislative?
If, if no one else wants it.
Would anyone else like to be on legislative?
I'll do it.
All right, John, congratulations. Um, capital planning. Michael, you wish to continue capital planning?
Sure.
All right. Operations. Michelle, will you chair operations this year?
Yes.
Katie? Kim?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Grievance. Michael, will you chair?
Yes.
Liz, you still want to be on grievance?
Yes.
And Katie, good with that? Seal. Katie, would you like to continue?
Please.
Please. All right, so LPVEC directors.
That was yourself and me.
That was me and you. Would you be willing to take the director's spot?
That's the least active.
That's the least active, or would you prefer to have the most active?
Um, I've been active for a couple of years.
Right.
I'll switch off.
So, you'll take primary as the director?
Okay.
And then Katie, would you take the governors? And are you willing to be each other's alternates if, if needed?
So, this one we need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote on this?
Katie, you're aware that's a monthly commitment and it meets in West Springfield.
So, what we need to do is we need to vote on the appointment to director and the opposite as the alternate, so.
So, four votes?
Uh, no, it'll be two, it'll be two votes, so we would nominate John as, to the director and then Katie as his alternate.
Why don't you nominate that?
Uh, I move to appoint John Fitzgerald to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Board of Directors and designate Katie Gerard as his alternate.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
And I move to appoint Katie Gerard to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Board of Governors and appoint John Fitzgerald as her alternate.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Um, Liz, green committee, will you still chair?
Yes.
Kim, you'll still be on it? Does anyone else wish to be on green?
I'll do it if you want, but.
You're, you want to be chair?
I think there's only been two on it this past year. You still?
I'll go on green.
You'll go on green? Okay.
You come to have the meeting anyway, right?
All right. For the newly, um, created energy committee that is joint with, um, the select board, Michael, will you be chair of that?
Sure.
Liz?
Yes.
Kim?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Middle school working group. Katie, will you still chair that? And John, you'll still want to be on that?
Yeah.
Is anyone else interested being on the middle school working group?
Quick note, I had submitted my interest to Chairman Emeritus Park a long time ago, um, not as a member, obviously, but just as a student rep to that subcommittee.
For the middle school working group?
Yes.
Yeah, Chairman Emeritus.
I would like to resubmit such interest.
You may be the student representative, Joseph.
Can I ask Michelle if she's interested in it?
Sure.
Can the middle school?
Middle school working group.
I would be, but I want to wait and see how much I'm taking on, so I'm sure I'm productive. I'm afraid that I might have, I don't want to.
Okay.
I can certainly sit on that with you to, to start with. The naming committee. Michael, you still wish to be chair?
Sure.
John, still on that committee?
I'd like to stay on that one.
Katie? Okay. And then for, um, the school representatives, Kim and Michelle, will you still remain as Blueberries School Liaisons?
Yes.
And Katie and Liz for both center and Williams, will you coordinate those?
Yes.
Um, I will take on Wolf Swamp. Michael, will you take on Glenbrook?
Sure.
And John, you'll remain with the high school?
I'll stay there, yep.
Okay. And then, the only other one is the food service advisory group, which that meets occasionally with, um, Tom, our food service director, some parents' representatives. Liz, are you interested in remaining on that?
I'll stay on that, yes.
Okay. Does anyone want to join Liz on food service committee?
Okay, I'll remain on that too. No, I like that. We go and eat. I'm all about food. All right, so that's committee assignments for this next year. So, we are good with that. Hi, Mr. Collins. Are you ready to present?
I imagine being more ready.
Okay.
So, we have you.
Exactly. First eight choices fell through.
We will always take you.
Eight fifteen. Knock me out.
That's my nephew, by the way, in the window. Those are my two kids. Aren't they gorgeous? Okay. So, let me give you a little background on Wax Museum project this year. Were any of you able to see the Wax Museum this year?
No.
No.
Okay, so let me tell you what it is. It's done by our sixth grade and every student in our sixth grade this year, we have a hundred and thirty-five students, becomes a character. They get to choose the character, so they research the character, they write about the character. And then, on the day of the Wax Museum, when we invite families in, they actually become the characters. So, there'll be some kind of initiation move where it's like if it's, uh, I don't know, Larry Bird, maybe you'll bounce the ball that's in front of them and that sort of starts the Wax Mu, the Wax Museum character comes to life. And then they tell you all about themselves from all the research that they did. And they dress the part, so they practice this, they do all their writing, they get really prepared. And then they memorize, most of them memorize all of the information about their character, so that when they're speaking to you and sharing their, um, character's information and bio, they're not reading from, some of them are reading from note cards, most of them are not. They're doing it all from memory, from all of the research and, and writing that they did about them. Um, and our plan tonight was we had two characters that were going to come and actually present their characters to all of you. Unfortunately, over the weekend, some things came up for each of them and they weren't able to make it. So, threw together just a few pictures that we took from the Wax Museum. That's a short version of what I just rambled on about.
Line of work or history that they're interested in?
Yeah, the boundaries are pretty wide, um, but some of the characters, you know, anywhere from, uh, Gandhi to Pele to, um, who was one of the, who was the Pittsburgh Pirate? That was one of my favorites.
Roberto Clemente.
Thank you. Roberto Clemente. He was one of my favorites, but I couldn't remember his name.
I've done that.
Yeah, tonight.
And it has to be a real person. It can't be a fictional character.
Exactly. And then they research them. Um, and then they dress like them, so what these next few photos will show is some of the characters that they have become. And we set this up in six classrooms, six, sixth grade classrooms. There's about eighteen to twenty-two kids in each room. Some are set up in the hallway, um, and it's really quite an amazing afternoon. We go from like eleven-thirty to two and parents are able to go through all the classrooms and these kids just keep going, um, one after the other.
Oh, Baba.
Baba.
With the, with the happy trees.
Happy trees.
Betsy Ross?
Betsy Ross.
Betsy Ross. Looks a little like Betsy. Anyway. I'm sorry that we didn't have a, a student here to share tonight because you would have been very impressed with just how put together all this really is and I can't see my. But, if nothing else, take me at my word that it's pretty, it's a pretty special afternoon and, uh, these kids do a lot of hard work to put these presentations together, so it's really a lot of fun. So, maybe what we'll do next year, because we always do it in the spring, is we'll send out an invite to the entire school committee, maybe the week before, so you all know that it's coming.
We'd love that.
And then you can just pop in anywhere from that eleven-thirty to one window, pop into classrooms and see what's going on.
That would be great. I've seen it in previous years. It really is impressive, the array of characters that they choose to research and how they really get into who they are.
They really do.
Uh, but it is funny how they're absolutely still until you either hit a bell or touch something and then they come to life and then they end by going still again, so it's really impressive.
A lot of fun.
Question. Why not have some guidance about, say, a person who's played a significant role, however that's defined, in the development of modern civilization? And I kind of question whether Chanel should be represented, the fashion, the fashion icon, but
But she was a crusader for women's, for the women's movement too. I mean, it was.
Was she?
Absolutely. She was empowered when, and a businesswoman when it was seen as improper and that the woman's place was in the home and she was really a trailblazer.
But the Chanel advertising is extremely sexist. I wouldn't call that feminist at all.
Well, that's not Coco's advertising now. I mean, it's been taken, but her original platform, I would say that that kid was.
Well, like, for example, Larry Bird versus Roberto Clemente. Uh, Larry Bird is a great basketball player. I don't put him down for that, but I, I don't associate him with anything else, whereas Roberto Clemente lost his life, uh, bringing aid, along with some others, to, uh.
I think what I would say is that you should come because I think you'd be pretty amazed with what these kids actually put forth. So, I hope to see you there next year and I think you'll be impressed.
Okay, I'm just giving you my two cents here.
Got it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it and very sorry that your students couldn't make it.
As am I because they would have been the hit.
Yes. Because I know they do put a lot of hard work into this project.
Well, thank you so much for having us.
Thanks for coming, Chris. Appreciate it.
Which of my clerks has correspondence? Kim, did you have?
It's Katie's turn.
It's Katie's turn. Do you have correspondence, Katie?
I, we do.
Okay.
Uh, we have a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvisville, from the Director of Occupation Education at the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Educational Center dated June second, twenty fourteen, regarding Student of the Month for May of two thousand fourteen. There were no Long Meadow students honored. Um, we have an emailed letter dated May twenty-second, twenty fourteen from Mrs. Stell Levitt regarding full-day kindergarten and an emailed letter dated June third, twenty fourteen from Mrs., Mr. Thomas, um, Manaya? Yeah?
Manala.
Regarding a district technology integration plan. That's it.
Thank you. Um, visitor comments? We have some visitors here. Would anybody like to speak? I'm going to hurt you.
Backseat driver.
Good evening.
If you could just introduce yourselves and name of the driver, please.
Uh, Chad Hanahan, nineteen Oak Road.
George Abdow, fifty-five Ely Road.
Um, so we're just here to put on the, uh, the table, uh, the idea of turf at the Long Meadow High School. Uh, we're looking to be put on the agenda for June twenty-third.
Okay.
Town meeting.
School, school.
I'm sorry.
And could, could you elaborate a little bit more about what you're, you're proposing?
Put turf on the football field?
Yeah. So, you wanted to put artificial turf?
Artificial turf, yes, sorry.
Third-generation synthetic turf.
Are you looking for the schools to fund it?
No, we're just looking to have the backing, support. This is a little impromptu. We, we were planning on having everything together for the twenty-third and it was suggested that we, um, come and present the issue vaguely to you tonight. And, uh, we don't have a lot of our ducks in line and we will make a formal presentation on the twenty-third.
Okay. If I could just ask, um, anything that you're putting in writing, could you submit? Diane, what time would you need it by to get it in our packets?
It's Wednesday before school committee at twelve noon.
Just so that we can?
It's the eighteenth.
The eighteenth, okay.
That way we could have time to review, um, everything and, and prepare questions for you at that time, if that would be.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I hope this is a fair question. Why do we need artificial turf? We've had natural turf since the beginning of Long Meadow High School and it seems to have served us pretty well. And if you're not prepared to, no.
No, it's a fair question. I mean, we'll have more, more of that to answer on the June twenty-third. Um, you know, again, I don't want to give you numbers and, you know, things that aren't true, so I'd rather wait till June twenty-third.
I mean, just very generally, the, this town compared, comparatively speaking, with the amount of high school and youth sports that we have in town, our amount of field space is approximately half of what it should be. And, um, the fields have become very deteriorated. They, again, without getting into a full presentation on the twenty-third, um, the, the field use space has become an issue. Also, the fact that the inclement weather in New England, especially this year, has prevented the high school teams as well as the parking rec teams from being able to use any field whatsoever they were practicing out in parking lots. Um, and again, this will all be given to you on the twenty-third formally, but, um, to answer your question pretty generally, this town does not have enough field space in general and by taking the high school field and being, converting it to a synthetic field turf, you would enable, um, much more use on the field without having it deteriorate and it would, um, take the load off of, of a lot of the other fields in town.
Okay. Can I follow up and again, it's just as a suggestion for your presentation. Uh, there's an environmental impact when you go with artificial turf. That is, we lose the amount of oxygen generated by the grass that grows on a natural turf field. And, you know, we hear a lot of talk today about going green and concern about the environment. Perhaps your, your proposal could address that concern. Because I'm sure there's a number of people out there who are interested.
And we can also address the reduced carbon emissions by not having to cut that grass.
Well, thank you for coming and, and expressing your interest and we'll have it definitely on the agenda for, um, our next meeting on June twenty-third.
Great.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other visitor comments?
You don't have.
I have. All right, any school committee comments?
Well, I.
You may.
Obviously, I wanted to, uh, first compliment, uh, congratulate Larry Birdy on an exceptional, uh, high school graduation. Obviously bittersweet, given that it's his last one, but I think the students did a really great job of surprising him uh, and, uh, came so close to being that hour and a half he likes, but he, he, he went with the hour and forty minutes because they surprised him, so it was good. Uh, I also just want to congratulate Joseph on his reelection.
Thank you very much.
As well as Liz and John and Michelle.
And you.
And you.
Thank you.
I'm not congratulating myself, but, uh, as well. And that's all I got.
Any other school committee comments?
I have a question. In regards to the correspondence, um, do we have any formal way that we respond to people and not leave them in the, like, I know we receive the correspondence and kind of, sometimes a few of us will talk amongst ourselves, but.
Anytime you can ask Diane and me to draft a response thanking them or recognizing that they, the letter came, just ask and we're happy to do that.
But should, I'm wondering if we should generate something, some sort of formal process so that, like, say, like, I know that the one, the letter from Tom came in and I sent him a, because that came to me and I forwarded to everyone, so I sent him a little thank to him and told him that I would, you know, keep it. But I didn't know if we do that with everyone, like, who does, is there, should there be a person that, like, says, you know, we got your letter, we'll take it into, we'll take it into consideration? I just feel like, you know, I've, I don't want them to get lost or feel like we're ignoring them or, yeah.
I agree with Kim on that. I would like to know, especially now that we're getting things individually as a part of the group. You know, I don't want to not respond to someone's letter and I don't know how it's handled, you know, being that it's coming to my email, but it's also going to everyone. How, how, when? Diane can respond that your email has been received and will be presented at a school committee meeting. We can make a standard response that every time it comes in, it's been received, it's been forwarded to the school committee and it will be discussed at our next meeting. Or, uh, if it's something that won't be discussed, uh, we can word something and send it out to you in draft form and if you like it, then you can okay it and we'll, and Diane can just send it out when it's presented.
I also can suggest that if it's something that brings up a, a, a real hot item, that the communications committee would handle that. As to, to research and actually give a more depth answer response.
Okay. It should be general because they don't always come to school committee meetings, so it should be your email's been received and will be discussed by either the school committee or a subcommittee.
Would that be appropriate, something like that?
Just so they know that it wasn't lost.
Lost.
Or just like, you know, put somewhere.
Or disregarded.
Yeah, just not, that we don't care enough.
Because we do ask people for, we, we ask the public for their input and.
And we do take those, I mean, we.
It's a good idea.
I mean, I know because I'm here on these subcommittees and here in our school committee, but I don't know that they know that we're actually reading every word in those letters and passing it on amongst the group and talking about them in our subcommittees and keep them in our subcommittees, so I just want people to understand that we do do that and maybe. in our subcommittee, so I just want people to understand that we do do that, and maybe a simple response to them is nice that we got it.
Thank you. John?
Well, if this past year's been an example, we have allowed committee people to respond, and I don't see anything wrong with keeping that individual discretion. If it's a hypersensitive issue, then maybe in the best interest of the committee, we should temper our remarks, but...
Right. I don't think that...
But we should be free to respond as we see fit to a fellow citizen.
If you're getting email that's sent, you know, it's sent to each of our accounts, I don't see why we couldn't, you know, individually respond, but I think, you know, just the idea of getting an acknowledgement that we've received it as a committee as a whole, you know, so that people do realize that we value what they're communicating with us.
How about, "Dear Blank, thank you for your communication to the school committee. Please know that this message has been forwarded to every member, and the chair will direct it to the correct person or persons. We appreciate your input."
I think that that's...
I like that.
Nice and short and sweet and...
Letting them know what you got there.
And acknowledges.
Okay.
Okay. Any other school committee comments? Oh, thank you. Okay, seeing none. There's no old business on the agenda, so we will go to your report, Marie, for the superintendent's report.
Okay. It's a sadness that I announce that Kelly Gange is going to be leaving us on June 30th. We appreciate everything that Kelly's done, but for personal reasons, she's decided that she's going to move on at this point. I am happy to announce that Susan Bertrand, Director of Pupil Services, will be taking over as Assistant Superintendent for Learning. I thought this was a good transition, because Susan has been a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. She's worked with the Technology Initiative. She's been involved with what we've been talking about, professional development, as well as many of our other initiatives. This means that we will have an opening for Director of Student Services, and we'll be posting that this week so that we can begin to pursue finding someone in that position. The Glenn Burke Principal Search, I did send you an email notifying you that the committee met. The pool was very, very thin due to the fact that probably we're off-season in education. The time for hiring is really usually January, February, and I try and get out around December to get the candidates first. The committee chose to interview four candidates, and they forwarded one, and that one candidate ended up taking a position in another district. So at this point, we're going back to the plan to find an interim principal for the year. This is a question for school committee. There is live streaming going on. Kevin Moranda has just worked this out, and it has started with the select board. With live streaming, in addition to having LCTV videotape us, this can be downloaded to a computer, so people, if you're away on vacation, you can watch what's going on, or if it's somebody who lives out of town can follow what's happening as well. So I put that out to the school committee. Are you interested in doing live streaming of school committee meetings?
Yeah.
Sure.
When people don't have cable, that's a good option.
Okay.
I don't see why not. It really makes us more transparent.
Do you know, like, do you know how the tech department implements this? Is there like a website that people go on?
I think it's a Ustream site.
This is something I was going to suggest, so.
Yeah. I don't need details.
Really?
Is there anybody who needs to post it? Okay. So I'll speak to Kevin about starting to livestream our meetings.
Great.
Okay. As Michael said, graduation was spectacular. I think it really gives it pomp and circumstance when you go to Symphony Hall. It's just such a majestic place to hold the ceremony. I know that we had Gabby graduating. This is the first of the Robinsons to leave the nest, so that's a big deal. I do appreciate the school committee members, almost every one of you were there. I know that if you could make it, you did, and if you couldn't, there were extenuating circumstances. It always amazes me the talent that is displayed at graduation, our student speeches, the student performances were just remarkable, so it was a great, great evening. It was very touching to see the students recognize Larry Birdy. They asked if I would put them up before I spoke, so Larry didn't see them on the program. They presented him with the Yankee shirt with the year 14 for graduation, and they also gave him a diploma and welcomed him to their class, so it was a very touching ceremony. And we congratulate Larry, as well as the class of 2014, on their, on this big milestone. What's happening in the schools? Field days are happening, and I know for many of our PE teachers, this is an unbelievable event. It takes hours and hours and hours to plan, but it's also one event that the students really love. When they talk about memories, it's often about field day, the cooperative activities, a little competition, but a lot of fun, as long as we don't get too sunburned and no dehydration. So they're ongoing in the middle schools and elementary schools right now, as the year begins to wind down. The kindergarten update, the latest numbers are in, and we so far will have three full-day classrooms at Blueberry, two full-day classrooms and one half-day program at Center, two full-day classrooms at Wolf Swamp. We'll continue to watch the enrollment numbers. Right now, the half-day program only has 14 students in it, so it does not look like there'll be a second section opened up at any other school. It would be surprising to see a surge in that number, but we'll see as the summer goes on. Diane and I are sending a letter out to the kindergarten parents of the half-day program to let them know that it's been decided it will be at the Center School. That was decided by the team, because it's the central location. It will mean least transportation issues and most convenient for parents to get back and forth to. Center also has the space, and Donna Hutton and her staff are very excited about having the half-day program there. Any questions?
Do you know, has it been decided, will it be a morning or afternoon half-day, which half of the day it's going to be?
I'll talk to Donna. I would be surprised if it were not morning.
Morning.
I would say that it's a morning program, but let me ask Donna that question.
And do we know a date by which we would confirm if any, if either Center or Wolf Swamp would need another section, so that we're not waiting until the very last moment to hire? Because I know that from our kindergarten committee meetings, the teachers will be meeting over the summer to coordinate curriculum and everyone be aligned?
I'd say August. You have home sales going on now.
Right.
Movement occurs, the second wave in registration will be July, the beginning of August, and most of our parents do come in July, August, the new parents that haven't registered before they moved into their home. It's not that many that come in. You still have, I shouldn't say that, we still have a handful that come in the week before, but we try to do that definitely by mid-August.
Okay.
Make a call on that.
And that way, that teacher can be up to speed with our new coordinated curriculum.
Right. And if we feel that the enrollment is going up, then we can post an anticipated opening and begin interviewing and just say, "This is an anticipated," and we won't know for another couple of weeks. We sometimes do that.
Okay.
So that we're prepared to move forward should we have to do that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Marie?
What's the, what do the numbers look like now for the whole new class? Is it about 16?
Do you remember, Wolf Swamp has approximately 21 in a class. Blueberry has approximately, was it 18?
16 and 15. And Blueberry Hill, there's 52 children totally registered.
With three classrooms, so whatever that divides up to.
Seventeen plus a fraction. And what was Wolf Swamp? Wolf Swamp was high.
21. There's 42 students registered. And there's 21 in each class right now.
Right. So that's on the radar screen to watch, because that's getting up there. And there could be a surge in the population there. There is movement over the summer normally in Wolf Swamp neighborhood, so.
What's that, for that? Is it 22? Is it cut off?
We were trying to keep a ratio of 10 to 1, so you have a teacher, teaching assistant with the teacher, so we're getting close to having to think about that.
From the committee's standpoint, Katie, we had said that we would try to keep it as close to 10 to 1 ratio as possible.
What if, like, two kids come in? Do you have an aide?
We talked about the possibility, and I need to talk to Neil about this, two possibilities of a section, or actually make one class larger and put in an additional aide, so that all your additional students, maybe a class of 26, but 53 adults in the room. So I would talk to Neil about that. The committee had talked about that as well. So that if the numbers are skewed, I think we could do that with an aide as well. Depends how many come in.
So right now, we're looking at hiring seven full-time kindergarten teachers and a half.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seven and a half.
We already have them.
I think we have seven, don't we?
We're not hiring anyone additional.
I think we're going to need a .5 teacher.
Right.
We currently have six sections in full-time, and then a .5 teacher right now, so we're going to need to increase that individual full-time and then add a .5. So we'll need one new person.
And then we'll be adding a .5 aide as well?
Correct.
Well, is it in the best interests of the parents and us to have that half-day, the morning session?
I think it's easier for the...
We don't, well, that forces to hire just half a teacher, right?
Right.
Is that difficult to do or not?
We did it this year, so.
Okay.
You have a lot of very energetic, excellent young teachers that would love to get a .5 rather than not have a job, so.
Wouldn't you think parents would like to have it in the morning rather than after?
I think so. It's usually the preference.
I have no idea what people would like for that.
I think the kids are ready or better learning. The little ones get up early. Yeah. So.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So do you have a report, oh, Chairman Emeritus?
I love that.
That's great. I put down my business card.
Yes.
Not particularly the update that I'll give, I will give during the other reports for energy committee.
Okay. Joseph, student report, please.
Thank you. A lot to congratulate, seeing as we're almost at the end of the year. So first and foremost, I'd like to congratulate the LHS class 2014 and their officers. Like Mr. Clark said, they had pulled off an amazing graduation ceremony, partly in thanks to their ushers, but we'll leave that aside for now. So congratulations to each and every one of them, and best of luck in whatever they plan on doing. I'd like to congratulate our new chairwoman, Ms. Robinson, and our chairman emeritus, Mr. Clark, and Shal Grodsky and other members who are up for reelection. Congratulations on all of your wins. As you can see, I am here without anyone, I'm not training anyone, so I did win reelection. So thank you to the students of Long Metal High School for that. I'd also like to congratulate my committee, that we just had our meeting with Robert Anderson, Michelle De Souza, and Ezra Kane. And on that note, I, you'll all note that in your, in your agenda, you have the official S-FAC list. Ooh, that's, you can't really see it. Well, it's in your agenda. I just thought we would put it up on the board for fanciness. So I'm just going to really quick read off your new officers. For the class, for the fiscal year 2015, Long Metal High School Student Faculty Advisory Council. This is Agenda Item 8B in your packets. These are the class officers, and together we make up the Student Faculty Advisory Council. For the class 2015, President Anthony Ferrera, Vice President Joseph Rinaldi, Secretary Jonathan Mack, Treasurer Benjamin Grodsky, and our new Vice President of Activities, John MacDonald, the very first person to ever hold the position, our advisors, Mr. Robert O'Connell and Mr. Joseph Rosenko. Class 2016, President Jake Jakowski, Vice President Ryan Cove, Secretary Madeline Asseltine, excuse me, Treasurer Benjamin Skeest, and their advisors, Mr. Matthew Flanagan and Ms. Lori Robbins. And for the class 2017, President Christopher Campbell, Vice President Carl Schermeister, Secretary Nicholas Taylor, and Treasurer Jordan Karon, with their advisors, Ms. Carla Drake and Mr. Patrick McGowan. And as I said before, we have our school committee student advisory council, and I'd also like to congratulate our Western Mass Regional School Council Representative Conrad McCarthy. Those are your elected officials from the Long Metal High School, so best of luck to all of them.
Joseph, it seems to be dominated by males. Is there any reason for that?
Well, the, we have our first, since Savari, we have our first female member of the school, the SCAC, so progress. And then we also have Madeline Asseltine, who's the secretary of the sophomore, now junior class.
I think I'll talk to Mr. Landers about maybe next year encouraging more females to run.
Are females running for office?
Yes. We had, actually not this year, for my class, we did not have any female candidates, but for the sophomore class, we did have just one, the one who won. And then for the freshman class, we had a bunch of, we had four different female candidates.
Okay. Thank you. We have extremely talented males and females as well.
Absolutely.
So I'd like to see more represented.
It's just, you know, and actually, my original draft of this document had Mr. Dunkley listed as administrative director, but yes, let this name be removed. He doesn't like to be in the limelight. But any comments or questions about student government, direct to Mr. Dunkley. I'd like to congratulate our tennis team for taking the, I believe it was 16th consecutive Western Mass, year of a consecutive of Western Mass title. They won. And I'd also like to congratulate our softball team, who came all the way to the finals, and better luck next year, and congratulations on a great season to our softball team. And best of luck to our Assistant Superintendent for Learning.
Joseph?
Yes.
Forgot about the girls' lacrosse team.
I'm so sorry. Oh, my God. Well, usually, Mr. Clark usually lead us off, so I usually miss, get anything that I missed. So, yes, congratulations to the girls' lacrosse team as well. All right. And I'm just going to really quickly review our SCAC meeting. Really, really happy that we, IT department and SCAC have worked together to complete successfully the initiative Electronic Report Cards, which we will be testing for quarter four to, the Electronic Report Cards will be sent out to all parents. We've been working on this for three quarters now, and we're very happy that IT has finally completed everything that they need to do, and we're going to test it out, and hopefully it will work well. We plan on, if everything goes well, getting the errors that we find and working those out over the summer, and then doing another test quarter one of next year, and hopefully even getting it out to the student emails as well. Some of the things we worked on from SCAC was, we are now successfully implementing Step-Up Day, as we discussed, in terms of the parent night. We will now have students incorporated in that, some student leaders. We will have clubs represented, some classes represented, teachers represented, get eighth graders a head start on looking forward to high school. The new, new backdrop that you have behind you, we now have the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There's another version, which we'll have in our next school committee meeting, and I welcome any more comments on that. We took a walkthrough of the high school today, and at the end of our meeting, I had some comments that the students wanted me to bring up to the committee, that, seeing as most of you don't spend every day in the school, you probably won't notice these things, but they, the students that were, that sit on the school committee advisory council wanted me to voice their concerns about smaller holes that they can find in the walls and also the AC or the HVAC system to make sure that... What's that?
What's wrong with that?
They wanted me to point out that we wanted to make sure, before we turn over the school entirely, that some that, at least in the opinion of the members of that committee, that they don't work to their highest standard.
Is it too warm? Is it too cold?
I asked Mr. Anderson to email me a list of specific problems, and that I would forward that on to you all. And finally, this is my message to students of Long Metal High School. First of all, thank you very much for reelecting me, but also I'd just like to encourage you all, if you ever have any issues or any ideas that we'd like to be brought up to the school committee, I love ideas, so please email me. My email is not only in your school email, but if you'd like to use your non-school email for some reason, listen on the Long Metal Public Schools website. So, thank you again, and I will not let you down.
Thank you, Joseph.
You're welcome.
All right. Financial report. John?
Yes. The man's subcommittee met on the 6th of June, and we voted to approve a couple of issues. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Tom Massif for further information.
Tonight, the first item we have for discussion and consideration for vote is a revised FY15 budget, based on action that was taken at town meeting to amend the budget amount and reduce what was approved by the school committee in terms of the total appropriation. We had to go back and revise our budget to reflect the reduced amount of $154,503.05. There were two lines specifically that were reduced, uh, that we worked with the Select Board on and Town Manager. That is the natural gas, uh, line at Williams Middle School. Uh, there was a reduction of $20,000 from the amount that was originally approved in the budget that was voted and approved by school committee in February. And the second line is the electricity for the Longmont High School. Uh, we reduced that by $134,503.05. And again, that is based on the fact that we had, did not have a full year's worth of, uh, consumption data. Marie, it also been, we've been working with a committee that Superintendent asked us to try to look at the systems and making sure that they're working to, uh, maximize efficiency of both the HVAC system and lighting, so that we're not, uh, using electricity, uh, beyond our needs. So, we will monitor that line this coming year, and, uh, if we run short and need to go back, uh, we have, uh, an agreement that they would support, uh, increasing funding at the fall town meeting if need be. So, tonight in front of you is, uh, four budget documents, um, the four documents we normally always publish with our budgets. There's the Control Master, which breaks it out by location, and then Control Group, the six control groups in each of the 11 locations. Um, there is the Budget by Fund, which breaks it down to estimated expenditures by the various funding sources. There is a Budget by Control Group, which are the, uh, the six control areas, professional salaries, clerical salaries, other salaries, contracted services, supplies and materials, and other expenses. And then the final document is the, uh, 25-page document, which is a more line-out of detail, again, breaking it down by the 11 locations, in each location, the six, uh, control areas. Um, so again, this is just all of the, the budget documents, they're all the same information, just presented in various ways to, uh, be very transparent and provide as much information we can, uh, to the community.
And can I ask, what is that total number?
So, the total mo-, uh, for a motion, we would want something to include the total budget amount, which would be $34,537,142.37. I would also ask that it include the general fund amount, which is, um, it's $31,367,616. They're both on the Budget by Fund, um, document, John. It's a one-page. And under the FY15 proposed, it would be, the very top number is our general fund amount, and the bottom number is the total, uh, budget amount for FY15.
Got it, okay. Shall I move?
Do you need a second?
Yeah.
Do we, second?
Second.
Did somebody, did we?
Any discussion, any further discussion? Do we need to make a change?
I have one.
Sure.
I wrote it, so I move that the school committee approved the fiscal year 2015 budget revision with a total general fund allocation of $31,367,616, as presented.
If I could just add, if you could include a total budget amount, also-
A total budget amount of $34,537,142.37.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Second? Second?
We don't have to mention the specific amount that we're moving from the two?
We do not, just the total amount of the general fund and the total amount of the budget.
Thank you, okay.
Any further discussion? Kim? All those in favor? Any opposed? So, seven, zero for that one.
The next item is FY14, our current fiscal years. Uh, we have about five pages, four pages of, I'm sorry, three pages of budget transfers. Um, these are transfers, uh, within the general fund. Uh, some of them are to address deficits that currently exist. At the end of every fiscal year, we have to clean up, um, lines that are in a deficit, and so I'm trying to be a little, um, again, going at it before the fiscal year closes to address these issues. There are also some transfers to address some instructional needs that were requested by, uh, administrators throughout the district. So, we are, um, Finance Subcommittee reviewed and, uh, recommended these transfers. So, this would be our fourth general fund transfer, uh, for FY14.
Subcommittee, that the school committee approved the budget transfers as outlined in the document titled, Fiscal Year 2014 General Fund, Transfer Number Four, dated June 6, 2014.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about those? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, so, seven, zero.
So, the third item, um, Finance Subcommittee reviewed a amendment to the Woodson's Food Service Contract last year when, we went out to bid prior to last year. The USDA regulations allow you to award a one-year contract with four renewal options. Um, Woodson's is completing their first year. Uh, they brought forward a proposal, uh, to Finance Sub in regards to our operations next year, uh, for costs, estimated, uh, sales, and participation. One of the things, though, that came out recently in an audit is that we charge $3 for adult meals, and our cost to produce a meal is, uh, more than that, and it's frowned upon by USDA that we would subsidize the cost of the adult meal. Um, and so they recommend that we consider increasing the cost-
Got it.
-of the adult meal price. Um, so, instead of bringing forward the amendment tonight, because Finance Sub, um, recommended that school committee approve an increase of 50 cents for adult lunches, from $3 to $3.50 effective next school year. If that is passed, it'll have an impact on the renewal in terms of the financials that would go along with a contract renewal. It will increase the revenue. We have approximately 7,500 adult meals that are sold, that we are selling this year, so it will have, uh, an impact on the financials for next year based on that estimate. So, we did not, I decided not to bring forward an amendment to the contract until, uh, some action is taken regarding the adult meal price.
So, we need to, um, decide this evening whether to increase the adult lunch price or not?
We do, and then what would happen is if, either way, whichever way the vote goes, we will bring forward the amendment for the contract to our next meeting.
Okay.
Is that the adult meal price at the elementary schools?
It's the adult meal price across the district.
Oh, okay.
So, these are, anyone who purchases meal is not a student?
Correct.
So, it would go from three to $3.25?
Would go from three to $3.50.
$3.50.
Do I have a motion?
Sure.
I move on the recommendation of Finance Subcommittee to approve the increase in the price of adult meals served in Longmont Public Schools.
Sure.
From $3 to $3.50.
Thank you.
I knew you were looking for that.
Any other further discussion? Okay, so, bless you. So, all those in favor? All right, so, seven, zero. So, Tom, you'll bring the proposal?
Yes, so our next meeting, we'll bring the amendment with the financials to support it for, at our next school committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so other committee reports, School Building Committee?
We're not meeting till the 18th, but obviously, everybody here knows that we just went on a tour of the building a little while ago, and, uh, Bobby answered a lot of questions for our members of the board about, um, the different HVAC systems, the different lighting systems, software systems, um, so that we might be better prepared to speak with members of the public about what's going on here.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, on that point, uh, I'm a bit concerned that we really haven't gotten input from the teachers. And, I know they don't have the right to sign off on it, but I would like to have all the teachers at the high school submit some kind of commentary on the condition of their room. And then, we could ask the School Building Committee to investigate whether this is a fault in the original plan, or is this something they've dreamed up since they moved into the room? I mean, we can talk about it, but. And I actually said that to the people tonight, that old Aristotle dictum, that the cobbler should not decide whether the shoes fit, it's the person who's wearing the shoes. And, I know there's an interest right now, and, by the School Building Committee, to hand off the building, but I don't wanna discover come September, October, that there's some major faults. So, I'd like to have some teacher input, either it's, if it's a survey or whatever, but I'd throw that open for discussion.
There's been tons of teacher input. Larry has surveyed them repeatedly, um, and has put out email after email. We have gathered every bit of evidence that we can from the teachers. There's an open line there. We had two punch lists running, we had one that came directly from Larry and the staff, and then we had one that came from the, um, project managers. So, we've been merging those two lists together. But I'm confident the teachers have been asked, the problems that are creeping up are more internal, they're around plumbing problems and things like that. But I think the teachers have been asked their, their opinions.
Okay. Do you think we're ready to accept the building?
I think we still need discussions on extending warranties and make sure that they're in place. Some of the, um, systems, for example, the HVAC is still, they fine-tuned it as of last February, this, this past February. So, the warranty should really start in February, it shouldn't be expiring. So, I think the Building Committee still needs to have those discussions, and I think until those are determined with our OPM, we should not take, um, ownership of the building.
Okay.
I was just going to ask if we had, you know, um, consolidation of all of the teacher input from Larry together, but he has-
He has a running, um, Excel spreadsheet that's been going on for a couple of years.
Thank you.
And, and-
Joseph?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I would just like to clarify on this topic. Um, this is how I, when I'm asked in, uh, in the world, this is how I always responded, and this is my true opinion, um, that the building of this high school has incre-, has, uh, changed the education for the better. And, uh, although, like I mentioned before, there might still be some things from a student's perspective that might wanna be worked out, but overall, it has, uh, greatly benefited the students and everyone that walks through the halls, uh, that it's an amazing project. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that I wasn't saying in my previous statement that the school wasn't up to par, I think it's, uh, above and beyond.
And Joseph's points a, a great one. We're looking at, um, we're down to the details, but there were thousands and thousands and thousands of items on that punch list, and we got it down to one page. We're still finding problems, so while I talk about what the problems are, overall, the building's in excellent shape, we're ready to do it. But we do want to maximize the dollars for the town, and it's our responsibility to make sure that these warranties are in place, and that we're making sure that we're getting, um, taken, taking care of by the warranties. If things hadn't been fixed until recently, the warranty should just start recently, too. So, that's the one thing I, I see that the Building Committee needs to work with the OPM on, to make sure that those are in place for us.
Is there gonna be an attempt at the 18th of June to pass the building on?
I don't know.
Well, and it seems, at this stage, it might be wise for us to resist that effort?
I think, again, John, like the last Building Committee meeting that we were at, we were very explicit that we want to know about these warranties, and we want it to be clearly articulated how long they last, particularly around the HVAC system. As, um, Joseph brought up, the heating was a problem all winter, and now if we're hearing about the cooling system, it's a different type of system, it's not air conditioning. It actually takes the moisture out, which is supposed to keep the temperature around 72 degrees. But if they're not functioning right, we should not be accepting the HVAC system, and we should not be accepting that the warranty has expired.
Thank you.
Okay. John, legislative update?
Uh, no, nothing to report.
Liz, Green Team?
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay. Katie, Operations Sub?
Nothing.
This is great. CO?
No.
No? Lower Pioneer Valley?
Uh, yes, we have a new director. Uh, he will be coming on, uh, the 1st of July, and, uh, our, our last meeting is coming up here next Wednesday. And perhaps, um, Katie and I could go to that, but.
Of course.
If you're interested.
Sure.
Okay, I'll talk to you later, but.
Okay. Middle School Working Group?
Nothing.
Policy Sub?
Okay, um, we've got three policies that are, um, we are ready to take a first look at. I'll start with the short ones. Um, we have a field trip policy, IJOA, um, to-
For Liz, I think that's for next meeting.
Oh, is it?
Mm-hmm. Cause we-
To do a first reading?
We didn't meet the deadline for this meeting.
Sorry, never mind.
I'm sorry.
It's fine.
So, we'll have three policies for first reading at the next meeting.
Okay. Then, nothing to report.
Then, nothing, all right. Any other committees, what am I meeting? Oh, Energy Committee.
So, we met, Liz and I, and, and Kim, and Marie Angelies met on Election Day, just to prove our continued dedication. Um, and we had a really great, uh, first meeting where we came up with a lot of different areas that we would like to look at. Um, first, and I think the largest of these things would be a town-wide, uh, look at solar power and solar energy. And that involves utilizing our existing buildings where available, and the town using their existing buildings and land, uh, where available. Um, in addition, we did talk a little bit about, uh, lining up our contracts. Uh, we're gonna be going out, when, 2015, to bid on new electric and gas, or just electric?
Our electric, our current contract expires in January 2015, and I believe our gas, it's either November, December of 2015.
So, the conversation kinda revolved around what type of efficiencies and savings, um, there may be if we were to align those things, but one of the risks that we run as a, as a committee financially would be that for a period of time, we would actually have to transition to the spot market, where we would have to buy electricity on a month-by-month basis and compete with, you know, increasing or potentially decreasing rates, uh, month over month, which could actually cost us more money. Uh, so, you know, the biggest thing that we need to look at with that is, is it really worth it? Uh, to, to line those contracts up, especially considering that the majority of our electricity is purchased through the collaborative. Um, and I believe the towns is as well. You know, the only cost savings that you, I, I mean, I could potentially foresee in that case would be that we, uh, you know, would be either on the town or the school, depending on when you lock in, and it might be a matter of, you know, cents per kilowatt hour, um, which is, you know, substantial in, in one way, but on the other hand, is it really worth it? So, we, we're still continuing to look at that. Um, additionally, I believe Kim was looking at grants. So, what were we looking at? I'm trying to remember.
I did not look at grants. We were looking at, um, energy audits?
Energy audits, that's what it was.
And, um, talking with the elementary schools about the types of light bulbs that they're using outside the building.
That's what it was.
And, if any of them were having, um, we talked a little bit about how Center School was having some heating issues in the house, in the school. And so, um, I checked with other, other elementary school to make sure that they were not having them, which they are not, but I think we discovered that was because the other two were updated more recently. So, we talked about, talking to someone about a, uh, energy audit, possibly. Just have to figure out how to go about doing that at an actual school versus a home. But, we're trying to, we're, we're working on it.
Great. Can I ask when, you know, Tom, you gave us the dates for when our contracts are up for renewal. Michael, do you know when the towns are?
You would have a better idea about that.
Well, the natural gas, we're already in a cooperative bid through the collaborative with the town and a number of other communities. I believe their electricity expires in December of 2015.
Okay, so it would be almost a full year of what you were talking about?
Again, November, December, I'm not exactly sure which month.
So, again, we have to look at, you know, is it worth it from a cost perspective? And I think Marie Angelies was looking at, um, she was looking at, at grants as well, that's what it was. Marie was looking at grants, uh, and she also brought up solar roadways, which, you know-
That was Kim.
That was me.
That was Kim that brought up solar roadways.
You don't have to like the idea, I just wanted to throw it out there.
I think it's a good idea.
You know, while we're redoing our infrastructure, it might be something to look at.
Perhaps the new Energy Committee could look at that?
That's what we're trying.
Oh, cool.
That's what we're doing.
I, I, I watched the video as well.
Did you watch that video?
It was a very interesting thing, and I was actually looking really hard and long for, um, negatives to it. And, um, the only ones that I could find, I personally think it's a great idea, that should be explored, but, um, is that the solar roadways, um, and obviously, it certainly makes sense if you've watched the video, could become, uh, the chemicals from the tires, the tar could, uh, cover the solar roadway, so. So, they would become less effective over time, and then we'd have to use chemicals to clean them, and, and then that might just diminish the, uh, green effect based on the chemicals. But I think it's an awesome idea, especially for, like, private parking lots.
Well, that was, the whole idea with using them in a parking lot is you don't have to re-line them every so often, because it's all underneath, and, um, there's no plowing, because they heat themselves.
It's pretty cool.
So, there's some positives to think about. I'm sure the cost-
Well, cause they, they, so they're solar roadways, so.
I mean, I don't know, if you're getting an inch an hour, maybe, but, you know, on a regular basis, and.
The way the video portrays is that the solar roadway will power itself and store its own, that, like, so it generates electricity, but also during the winter, will use some of that electrical power to keep the temperature of the, the roadway elevated, to melt the snow.
And then they have the sidewalks that, um-
And they have the sidewalks that, um, know when people are getting ready to cross and turn the lights, so that people can...
The Internet of Things.
Things to come.
I'm just, you know...
Maybe we need a future committee.
Could be no school, you'd never call school off again?
Wouldn't it be great?
Take care of all the ice and the snow and...
And all the sidewalks.
No getting a formal...
I think that is an excellent idea.
We'd all get out on time.
And we do have another meeting scheduled, um, I believe for the end of this month.
For the, the town?
For the 24th.
School Energy Committee?
Yes.
Does it have a name?
It's the Energy Working Group. It's at 9:00 AM, Joseph, sorry.
They're not in school?
I'll spec in.
Oh, they still are in school.
It's the 24th.
24.
Maybe he doesn't have a final that day.
It's Tuesday.
Till the 25th, sorry.
Next time.
Maybe you don't have a final that morning, so.
We're nice.
So instead of sleeping in, you can come to one of our meetings.
It's here at the 25th.
Oh, it is?
That's right. Okay. Other items. We have the MAS-C, MAS-S Annual Conference being held November 5th through the 8th. Um, the School Committee has in recent years sent two to three members to this conference, as well as the superintendent. We need to designate one member to be our delegate to vote during the business meeting portion of the conference. MAS-C will be sending along resolutions and agenda items at a later time, which will be brought forth to the committee for consideration. And your delegate will vote on the committee's decision on each resolution or item. So we need to choose two to three members to attend.
I'd like to go.
Who went last year?
This is John, Liz and I.
Okay. Do we typically rotate those?
Okay.
I'd like to recommend the experience to anyone who hasn't attended. And, uh, this year is an election year, and they usually have, uh, some key political analysis right after the election, uh, that informs the MAS-C's, uh, electoral strategy. So it, it's a worthwhile experience, and it's a chance for you to get away from your families for a couple of days.
So Katie's?
I would love to. John sold it.
It also goes through recent law, it will go through things like the superintendent's evaluation. It really is a very worthwhile conference.
The topics last year were, seemed really interesting, so...
I, I would like to go, um...
I wouldn't mind going, if I can.
Yeah, I would like to go too, but does it tell you any time when it is or anything?
No, it's November... November 5th through the 8th.
Oh, okay. Said TV.
It's a beautiful three days in Hyannis in November.
Two years ago, the plumbing didn't work, but...
John got a free room.
Those are big calls.
So did I. Uh, I, I would suggest that you think about sending half the committee one year, half the next year. The learning curve of the School Committee is very steep, and you know that when you come on, and you're expected to do a lot and get on the treadmill rather quickly. This conference would help you keep pace with what's going on. You get to talk to representatives from all over the state, it's really worthwhile. I think it's a good investment for the School Committee to go out and get the training.
There are committees that actually send their entire committees. We've seen superintendents very, very tired at the end of those days.
Like you...
Let's all go.
Do we have a budget that we have to stick to, to send like half of us to have a go?
We have to budget it, um, but School Committee does have a, a line, and we'd have to talk to Tom about doing that. But it's, again, it's around training, you make a lot of decisions that are legal, this is, this is legal advice, it's, it's, um, what's happening in the law, so I think it's worth putting money in the budget.
So perhaps we could have, the four of us can go this year since the three went last
year, and, and we could rotate?
I'm sorry.
That seems fair to me. I think that's fair.
All right, so then we, do we need to decide now on the delegate who's going to be voting out of the four of us?
Something came, didn't it? Something came about that?
You have to do that now.
I haven't seen it, I mean, you might as well...
Something did come in the mail about me, but, Phil, give, letting them know who it is, and I...
Is that what this is? Cause it didn't look like, this looked like an urgent...
Oh, yeah, I haven't read that yet.
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah, this was...
Michael, you can make a motion to authorize Janet to vote for, um, represent this delegation.
Well, who were the four who were going?
Michelle, Katie, Kim and I would be the four going this year. And you're going to make a motion?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
I move, uh, that, uh, the School Committee appoint Janet Robinson to be our delegate to represent the La Meda School Committee for the November 5th through 8th, 2014 MAS-C, MAS-S Conference.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm sure I will have a big learning curve.
Well, we all get to vote on those things anyway, don't we?
Right. It said that we'll be voting on them, and I will represent that vote.
And that was the 5th through the 7th?
The 5th through the 8th.
5th through the 8th on this, yeah.
Okay, so then we have, the high school is looking, is bringing two textbooks forward for consideration. Both will be available for review over the next two weeks. We will not be asked to vote on this until our June 23rd School Committee meeting. May I ask what subjects these are in?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
The textbooks, math and physiology, um, algebra. I have talked to Meredith Loughlin, the chair of the math department. The proposal first came in with just the textbook, and I asked her to look at electronic versions as well. Uh, they're, they're an additional, is it $5, Tom, a copy to make it electronic?
I believe it was like a $10 for seven years or something.
So we are going to move forward with that. Meredith is very excited about the, um, about piloting this next year in algebra, so that the students will have an electronic copy as well as a hard copy. I think our goal should be to move away from textbooks, but right now, many companies aren't up to speed on it, plus we have to make sure that we have our BYOD running before we can really count on just using, um, just using the electronic version. This is the Human Anatomy and Physiology book, we're still talking with the science department about making sure that there's an electronic version to go with it.
Can I ask, this is a different publisher than the books that we approved last year for middle school?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Usually with series, you try and get elementary closely aligned, middle school and high school. Even the middle school uses different series in the different grades, and that typically is in every district I've been in. Newton, Carlisle, all of them, the different grades use different textbooks.
I just worry, like, the language is so different now, especially when we talk about like this idea of new math, and we, we throw different language at them, that remaining consist, I mean, I, I, even today with my fifth grader, when I said something just differently, it was the same concept, but used different language, he looked at me like, we don't, we never learned that.
And you, you see that fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade where the language is different as they move from text to text. By the time they get to the high school, it tends to be that they picked up the different languages. But when you go to Scott's, Forsman, and you go to, um, Gateway and Investigations, they, they all have different languages, but it, it hits it really, middle school is really, where it really hits home.
Because we don't continue with Investigations in middle school.
No, we don't.
So little, Investigations is K through five, and then we're changing texts and programs in middle schools.
Can I ask a question? I thought that Common Core uses Investigations, so we needed to have it in middle school.
There were several different, uh, series that are Common Core, Investigations is one of them. Uh, Investigations was chosen before I came, I, I think it was in the third year when I came, so we're in about the seventh year of it. It is one of the five programs that is higher level thinking, it's a little weak on the basic skills, so the committee, the math committee that we had a couple of years ago talked about supplementing with Scott, Forsman, because all of the higher level thinking prob, programs, that's one of the weaknesses in it. But it is one of the better programs that's out there.
Right. So, um, just from personal experience, if a child is using Investigations in, uh, elementary school, and then they go to middle school and they're not using it, but it's on Common Core, so that's on MCAS, then what do they do?
The teachers selected, the teachers at the middle school also had the middle school math committee that was last year, the year before, and they went through the Common Core. They had significant changes, they had the compacted curriculum where they were actually in eighth grade doing two years of math in one year. So they explicitly picked books that were in line with the new Common Core.
Okay.
We had money at the end of the year and said, if you can do this, we can fund it, and they did it.
Okay.
I have a question here. What course is this book going to be used in?
Anatomy and Physiology.
And who's that taught to?
11th and 12th grades.
11th and 12th?
Right.
In lieu of, instead of Biology?
Biology's in the young grades, ninth grade.
That's considered Biology 2.
Well, there's no mention of, the word evolution doesn't appear in the index.
That's the makeup of, but that's like a separate, that's understanding how your body is constructed, it's not the evolution of...
It's not the development of it, but...
No, that's bones and...
That doesn't play a part in understanding, you know, anatomy?
Yeah.
I'd, I'd like to look at the scientific method behind that.
The, so freshman year, we take a course, Biology, um, and from my own memory, we cover evolution in that course.
I remember that, too.
This is, um, and this is actually, this is a, uh...
An elective?
I would say like an AP, right?
Right, but this, well, it's not an AP, but, um...
What is it?
It's not a required course, students do not have to take this class, um, I don't know if it's...
It's a sub, it would be like a subspecialty of Biology, but it...
It's like Biology 2, I believe.
Yeah.
And right now, they don't have a book.
Right.
What do they use?
Hold on, he's like one of those skeletons.
It's, it's teacher-directed taught, it's not...
We have a book, we're just adopting a new one to make purchases. It's updating.
Thank you.
Does Gabby have a question?
It is, it's Biology 2, Anatomy and Physiology, that's the full name of the course, and it's, it's, um, it's a full-year course, so you would either take it instead of Physics junior year, or as your science class senior year.
It's a really challenging course.
It is. And they do an excellent job with it.
It, it covers, uh, vertebrae and, uh, anatomy and, if you can, if you want, you can read from the La Meda High School Educational Opportunity, like, exactly what the course covers, if your, if your concern is evolution, I'm pretty sure that's covered freshman year Biology, as opposed to this Biology 2.
Well, it's, my concern is that I don't know how you can understand human development and how the human body operates, except in light of evolution. And therefore, as a personal agenda item, over the years, anytime I've been asked to pass on a textbook, I like to see if there's a historical development there, especially in the field of science. And there is a section in that book that I would like to, to read, and that's the bit on scientific method.
Okay. All right, so we have our warrants.
Now, that's, uh...